How does this number compare to other years?
So that unfortunately, it's an increasing trend. The we're seeing the number of fires increase and unfortunately, the number of deaths increase as well. Last year, total number of deaths, there were six associated with these batteries. So far this year, there are five. And the latest numbers we have for the total number of fires is sixty-three as of as of this morning.
And does the FDNY track the types and manufacturers or models of the e-bike scooters that are involved in these fires?
If they are known, we are we track them. Unfortunately, a lot of the the devices that are involved with fire are so badly damaged that it's difficult to determine, you know, the make, the model, and so on. But if we have it, we are, we do track them.
What do you believe the contributory factors are for these bikes? Or the bikes who are at most risk to go on fire while charging for at length hours?
So there's a combination of of various reasons for the fires. One of them is batteries that are low-quality batteries, that are not the batteries that are supplied with with the device that that's purchased. Aftermarket batteries or batteries that they might might be able to order online that do not meet a safety standard. Another issue is the improper charging device. Charging device that is bought with the with the the charger that is bought with the device stops working. So again, maybe somebody buys one, an aftermarket charger that's not compatible, charges, provides too much voltage to the to the battery and causes a causes the problem. A third reason may also then be damage to the battery. These lithium-ion batteries could sustain damage that the user doesn't realize, and that could cause thermal runaway, even if it's being used with the proper charger.
And I think there's also a a component where some users are creating their own batteries, and they're not buying the UL certified, which was the whole reason for the legislation in the package that Councilmember Oswald Felice and I prime cosponsored. And do you believe that this legislation would further help for people to get UL-certified batteries? Because it would be, you know, kind of, you know, would be a a trade-in? And and also be able to charge them, even if they weren't UL-certified? Charge them in a fire-resistant protective environment?
Correct. If we were able to get the the correct batteries in in the user's hand, we have seen some instances where people are could do-it-yourself, trying to fix battery packs, taking several apart and trying to put them together, and that that's a problem as well. And certainly, a a fireproof, a fire-resistant charging container, a protective, some sort of protective container, I believe would go a long way to to mitigate the hazards from from these batteries.
Councilmember, apologies, councilmember. With respect to the portion of your question about the buyback program, I just wanted to add the administration is certainly very much aligned in spirit with the intent behind that program. I think, you know, even in the mayor's task force report, he identified a like-such program as a potential way that we could we could improve safety, especially in the growth of e-micro mobility in New York City. So along those lines, certainly, we we support the intent of that legislation.
You mentioned in your testimony that you do have a product, like a fire-resistant device that or box that you have looked at, and have you tested it?
So last week, we we were able to test. The product, I believe, was originally intended for cellphones to to be protective when a cellphone is charging. So you have to realize that the battery in a cellphone is significantly smaller than the battery pack that we would test it with with a bicycle. And the results were were not good. The 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 device burned, the bag burned, and it was able to would have spread fire through, you know, through the bag. It was not not successful.
What existing fire code regulations pertain to motorized bikes and scooters powered by lithium-ion batteries?
I would defer to my colleague Julian Basil on that.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the question?
Sure. What existing fire code regulations pertain to motorized bikes and scooters powered by lithium-ion batteries?
Yes, the 2022 Fire Code, which was enacted at the end of effective April 15, 2022, had certain regulations to address storage and charging of micro mobility devices. We call the personal mobility devices. Essentially, these were primarily addressed to commercial settings or building settings, not to individual use of e-bikes. At the time this was drafted, it was before the current outbreak of fires. There are general safety requirements regarding electrical, adequate electrical facilities to charge the bikes, adequate ventilation. And if there are more than five bikes being charged at one location, a dedicated charging room with a sprinkler and other fire se- fire separation from other areas. Essentially, we envisioned this at the time to be a facility that a building, whether it be an office building or an apartment building, could create a charging room, similar to to what they've already had for bicycle storage, with adequate charging. Of course, at that time, we did not anticipate all of the fire hazards associated. There had been a fire in a fleet facility, an e-bike fleet facility, which is what alerted to us early on, and I would say about 2019, to the potential hazards with lithium-ion batteries and micro mobility devices. And we did incorporate that provision. But as a Fire Department doesn't have a program to inspect people's private dwellings, and this did exclude the storage of batteries in in private dwellings, provided they were limited in number. What we were aware was that some people were engaging in commercial activities in in their own dwellings, modifying batteries, making these lithium-ion batteries, and that was was prohibited by the Fire Code.
So and has the FDNY found there to be a general compliance with requirements contained within the Fire Code when they do inspections in areas that they are able to do inspections? Are they finding that these batteries are being charged in compliance with the Fire Code?
So the Fire Department has a task force with our Bureau of Fire Investigation, Bureau of Fire Prevention, where they are inspecting commercial occupancies and enforcing the Fire Code. And there's varying degrees of compliance with the Fire Code. But they have they have shut down a couple of locations.
And when you go into, say, there's a residential fire, and you go into a place where there is a fire change, a fire-charging office or apartment that's used specifically for that? What measures are taken and what types of fines are levied to the landlord of that building? The owner of the of the home? You know, we we've seen horror stories, we've heard horror stories, and seen rooms filled with hundreds of lithium-ion batteries being charged in apartments rented just for that purpose. So what recourse do you have once that is identified?
If we receive a complaint, our task force would go out and investigate it. Obviously, we don't typically go into people's dwellings. We don't typically get information about what's going on within people's dwellings. However, I would say that the Fire Department has made all of its inspectors aware of the hazards of e-bike charging. And our inspectors are, in the course of their duties, in inspecting a variety of buildings, including perhaps basements of apartment buildings. If they do see a condition that gives them concern in terms of e-bike charging, they would make a referral, and appropriate action would be taken.
And the task force you refer to and and the inspectors from the Fire Department are obviously trained in this type of identification and what to do, you know, if it is if it's found?
Well, I would say from the Fire Department's perspective, you know, if we see a bike being charged, you know, our concern is going to be raised. We're not experts on all the different kinds of e-bikes, and it's always pointed out to us, it's pointed out to us regularly that some of these bikes are illegal. They're, you know, illegal mopeds. And and that is a a whole separate enforcement program that I believe the Police Department and DOT are involved in.
To what extent do we believe are retailers, repair stores, or other commercial entities storing and charging multiple e-bikes at that location?
I'm sorry, are they prepared at this time?
So to what extent do you believe, like, stores that are selling food, and they had they employ deliveries to deliver their food? Or companies that are using, you know, food delivery workers or any type of delivery person? Like, to what extent do we believe that they are aware, aware that it's that it's not legal and aware that it's dangerous? And how do you address that when your inspectors do go to those? Because you are able to go in and inspect those locations.
Well, I would say that as a result of all the attention that's being given to this, all the outreach that's being done, the city council's own actions, the media reporting, the public is starting and business people are starting to become much more aware of the hazards. That's one of the big focuses of the mayor's task force, was on outreach and education of the public. And the Fire Department, in the course of its inspections, when it goes to, for example, bike shops or fleet facilities, is explains to them the hazard and the the important, the necessary to comply with the Fire Code. Initially, I would say the focus of enforcement has been on electrical hazards, you know, inadequate outlets, the use of extension cords, power strips, stacking of batteries. You know, we've been to locations where there's 800 batteries, and it's clearly a serious immediate fire hazard. Additionally, there, you know, the need for a separate dedicated room is something that I think we've been trying to get the message out, and we're starting to to take enforcement action. I think that that presents challenges for some businesses. Obviously, the larger businesses that have operate out of warehouses or or other kinds of buildings that can accommodate this are probably beginning to to comply with that. Smaller stores, it's a challenge. I think there's a lot of discussion now, and one of the task force recommendations was focused on outdoor charging as a possibility. You know, I think consideration is being given to a wide range of solutions to this problem. But I I would not say that every business is compliant at this time.
And when they are not compliant, even after a first visit, what what are the fines? What type of fines are they are they open to?
Yeah, yeah. Most of the fines are under $1,000 as an initial penalty. It goes up on on subsequent penalty. I mean, in some instances where it's severe, they may be getting multiple violations. And I think, I don't know, sure if we've even arrested people on occasion.
All right. I will now defer to my colleagues if anyone has questions.
First, we'll hear from Councilmember Schulman, followed by Powers.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for coming today. So I have a question. So a a regular wall outlet in an apartment is not adequate, right, for charging these types of batteries? Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I would, I think for charging one battery, it might be. But we'll we'll get the the answer for that. I'm I'm not sure.
Because if if it's not, because they seem to happen in apartments, for the most part, these fires, then that's something that maybe we need to take another look at in terms of banning those types of things from doing the wall outlet. Because I know, I live in an apartment building, so I know certain things I can't, I have to be careful about, especially if they take up a lot of energy. So that's one. The other is that are you doing any kind of education campaign around this? And are you doing it in multiple languages?
So the Fire Department is doing in our our fire safety education, our outreach. So far this year, we've we've had contacts with 45,000 people. The lithium-ion battery issue and and concern is brought up at at all of our all of our outreach. And the advice that we are giving, and and hopefully, everybody here has heard it several times, trying not to charge overnight, trying not to charge them in the in the path of egress in the apartment. And if possible, and and we realize that that it's not always possible, and that's what makes this such such the difficult issue it is to try to charge these batteries in in an unoccupied room with the door closed. So if there is a problem that there's nobody there, and we're able to close doors and and leave the occupancy. So the the continued outreach, the education message that we're getting out. And I will confirm that it's a that it's out in multiple languages.
And then so, I'm sorry?
It definitely is in multiple languages.
Thank you. Is, so I know whenever there's a fire in a community, you send out a team, and they do education in the community. Does, and at that point, you may or may not know what caused a fire. But do they have as part of this education pamphlets or information about what, if it's a battery, like what people should do?
And you are, you're absolutely correct. So after we have a fatal fire anywhere, we do what we call a fatal fire campaign, where we'll put people in that community to to spread the word. We do talk about the cause of the fire, we stress sprinklers. And I will confirm that that we're also, when it is the cause of the fire or not, that we have information about lithium-ion batteries as well.
And now, I I'm going to ask a slightly different question, which is, so these, when there's a fire caused by a lithium-ion battery, it explodes rapidly. Am I correct in that? So that it creates a very, an intensity that other fires may not cause? Is there any, is there anything that the Fire Department is looking at and how to combat these fires in a way that's different, maybe, than how you approach other kinds of fires?
When a lithium-ion, when there's a fire started by a lithium-ion battery, it's been compared to when an accelerant is used, for example, gasoline. So what, for the Fire Department, what that means is that when we get there, it's a much more advanced fire. So it, once it has spread to the to the building, to the structure, it becomes, you know, for us, what what people might just call a regular fire. It's a very intense fire. We're trained to 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 handle this. We don't, aside from seeing more fires, it's not unlike many other fires that that we've had. Just the awareness that when we have an advanced fire on arrival, that more and more, they're they're caused by lithium-ion batteries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Powers?
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for all your work and and your test 20. Just based on the numbers alone, do you guys think we're in a crisis right now when it comes to e-bike fires?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I say just based on where we are right now, based on the numbers, and certainly compared to last year, would you call this a crisis when it comes to e-bike fires?
I think that's a fair way to 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 categorize it. It's it's very concerning, the number of fires that we have.
Thanks. Yeah, I know you had mentioned that there were some illegal mopeds. I think there was different types of bikes that were being, were part of fires that we're seeing. Do you, I know you don't have a breakdown, because the bikes will often get destroyed. But do you have any sort of breakdown in terms of that you can share with us about what types of bikes are being used or have been recovered in the fires or have been the cause of the fires?
I don't have that at this time, but we'll we'll check with the Fire Investigation, and what we have, we can get to you.
Okay, that'd be helpful as we try to figure out this. The, have you, I know this is bills on some questions the chair had asked, but have you have your investigations uncovered what the most common source of faulty uncertified batteries is? Is it buying online? Is it from local retailers? Is there any way to tell what the source is and what is the primary driver?
I don't have that exact breakdown. But what what I've seen is that very rarely is the device being used with the original battery and the original charger. There's some some sort of change in there. But again, we'll check with Fire Investigation and and get you what 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 they have. Unfortunately, because of the damage, you know, they they do interviews with the people that that own the bikes, and and we have to rely on the the info that they give us. But I'll I'll be able to to share what what we get.
So you're saying there's a mismatch between bike, battery, charger, that helps cause?
From what I've seen, that 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 is the 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 common issue. Very rarely is it the the original battery with the original charger.
Okay. And you mentioned doing outreach in 45,000 people. What is your budget for fire outreach in the FDNY?
That I'm not sure. We'll we'll get that for you as well.
That'd be helpful to know. Because I think you have the normal course of action you need to take here with regular residential fires and things like that. I think we are now entering a new phase of needed fire education outreach. It does sort of seem we should be talking about the ability to increase that budget so that you can do a separate side of this, which is, as we said both, I think, a crisis around fires and how to educate people that may need it. The, it, is there a, when we talk about safe, we did a bill about a month or two ago that talked about UL certification as a measurement for being what what is considered safe. Are there other measure, are there other measurements or tools that you see available to help determine what would be deemed safe for folks who are are using e-bikes and charging their batteries?
I think that that relying on the education aspect of it and stressing the importance of the proper equipment for that battery. And, you know, the the part about the charger is very, very important, because we could even go buy a a listed and tested charger. But if it's providing the wrong or increased voltage to that battery, which could be a listed and and tested and UL-certified battery, we could still have a problem. So we we've heard talk of maybe having it that only that proper charger could connect to that battery. If there's some sort of technology or or ability to to do that so that you can't use the wrong charger for a battery.
Got it, okay. More specific on the legislation we have introduced here today, intro 949, which is obviously about a swap-in, swap-buyback type of program. I know there's a task force that's dealing with this, and you guys are deferring to him in your testimony. But just, you guys are still the folks that are going to have to be a big part of that if we do it. Do you have any, how do you envision a program like that working? How long do you think it should run? I do, I am sensitive to the idea that we may not want a program that runs on forever, where people are buying cheap ones and trading them in for better ones. But certainly, you're going to need to have a runway to make sure we get all the unsafe batteries off the streets. Can you give us any sort of, you know, additional, either recommendations or thoughts on a program like that?
Thank you, councilmember. I think, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think those are, those are important questions that we are, the task force are also working through as we're trying to consider how to implement the program. I think significant details, for example, also include the costs, you know, and that could relate to the scope. Within the mayor's action plan, he did identify that, we did identify that federal or state funding might be required, or another type of alternative scalable funding. And for example, you know, we've heard recently of many major, major companies instituting their own buyback programs. I think it is an important component to consider that businesses that rely on the hard work of delivery workers, whether those delivery workers are independent contractors or whether they're employees, also have certain responsibilities to ensure that that folks have safe and access to safe devices and safe vehicles. The unique needs of workers is something that is a priority for us. Not just the independent contractors that fall under DCWP's laws, but also employees that might be using bicycles in New York City, I think is is important. And then, from the perspective of agencies, you know, I I think the task force has been a great convening of many, many levels of expertise, whether that's us or or the Fire Department, DOT, DSNY. I think ultimately, we'll have to leverage all those pieces when it comes to procuring storage of batteries, particularly maybe older batteries that the city's receiving. I think all these pieces are things that we're we're currently wrestling with on the task force.
Okay. I just, I'll add on this note. We are, need to act urgently. And the legislation we did a few months ago, I think, does help us, put us on a path of tracking, addressing the retailers and the sale of uncertified batteries. This is to help plug that gap and make sure we get the unsafe ones off the street. So I deeply appreciate how quick we got this hearing, and thanks to the chair for that and the speaker as well. We are going to have to, after the hearing, move, I think, quickly to try to get the details formed up with you guys about how this program works. So would appreciate, sorry, become detail-oriented altogether on how we can do that, and we, and us as well. Because I think the the fire last week, losing a nineteen-year-old, I think, a seven-year-old is, it just, we're like failing, we're failing as policymakers if we're not protecting those folks from that. So anyway, we'll be looking forward to work with you guys and try to get something in place soon. Thanks so much.
Thank you, councilmember. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you very much. A couple of issues. First of all, and I probably should know this, but if you have a bicycle, e-bike, or motorbike, and a battery that are compatible, can you then, picking up on Councilmember Schulman, charge them in a regular apartment? Or is that still challenging? The reason I ask is, not only are we dealing with the people who are delivering, but every apartment building in Manhattan is now saying, keep your e-bike somewhere else. So it's a longer, it's a bigger story, because nobody wants the fire. So if you have a bicycle, e-bike, and a new battery, and they're compatible, is that safe in a building? Nobody knows the answer to these questions, by the way.
I believe you are able to charge them in your apartment.
Okay, so that would be, that's the goal, in other words, that would be the goal. All right, then, but also, sometimes, and my knowledge is not perfect, you need more than one battery, because the delivery workers are working so hard, 12, 14 hours a day. You need more than one battery. So would all of those batteries be compatible to that bike? Because you need more than one, just to keep going with all your deliveries?
I'm going to, on that specific question, defer to to Julian. But but I just want to go back to the previous question of, you know, what what the rules and what the law allows and what are best practices sometimes are two different things. So, you know, you have a new bike with a battery and a compatible charger. The the law will probably allow you to charge that in your apartment, and that might, may not necessarily be the safest course of action.
Okay, that's why we need to understand all of this. Thank you.
I I think this is where the certification by a national testing laboratory comes in. Pretty much, all the products that we're used to dealing with in in everyday life, the electrical products, have these certifications. And the certification is all the different components. In many cases, it's, there's more than one certification for a particular device. And it makes sure that they all, you know, work together. The way it's described is that there's a handshake between the different components. So the way it's supposed to work is that the, obviously, the manufacturer that gets certification of their original product, they've designed the products to work together, and the certification that they obtained from a testing laboratory would would show that. But UL has indicated to me, for example, that it doesn't have to be the same manufacturer. They will accept applications from other manufacturers who want to sell, you know, generic or aftermarket products. And they will say that this has been designed to work with a particular bike or bike battery. And they can get certified for that bike battery, even though that's, they're not the manufacturer of that battery. So this is, this is, and they will test it with that battery to make sure it works. So ideally, that will, over time, solve this problem. But, you know, this is, the lithium-ion is an emergent technology. It's not perfected. Obviously, it has this thermal runaway. And, you know, the concern with this technology is that even under perfect circumstances, you know, a manufacturing flaw or some other, you know, a damage to the product can cause it to go into thermal runaway, even, you know, a certified product potentially. So it's not, you know, this is something that the technology has to, you know, has to develop and solve these problems. The good news is, with all the attention that's been given to this and with the demand for these products, there's just a lot of money to be made in this area if these problems are solved. And I I think we believe And I, I think we believe that, um, on all levels, uh, there's tremendous efforts being made to solve these problems.
No, I agree. I just worry that while we're, I know the commissioner said that in a few years, we might be out of this mess, but right now we're in it. We don't want anybody to die. It's really frightening. So I'm concerned about right now. So the other question I have is, the commission indicated that fire department was talking to the online retailers. Have, have they been successful in pulling some of the batteries that are challenging off the online opportunities for sale? And again, where are the deliveries that's gonna get batteries? This is really com- hard on everybody, but where we, how is that going in terms of batteries online that are not safe, basically?
The fire department has been in touch with the Con- Consumer Product Safety Commission. Uh, they have instituted some recalls of, of devices, and we continue to, to have our discussion and try to, uh, try to get our message out and try to get these batteries, uh, from not, not available.
Okay. One more question, Madam Chair. Um, the other question I have is, we're back to the charging station problem, I think. Because if, I don't know how many of us have an extra room where we can close the door and not worry that we're gonna oversleep. So my question would be, that's not, to me, gonna be a satisfactory answer that is gonna solve the charging problem. Do, I mean, the mayor has a couple of suggestions or the task force on newsstands. I'm aware of the NITRA suggestions. Well, that would just be, as I understand it, for NITRA employees who are, have bikes. Any other ideas? Because we need more charging stations. I'm going around literally looking for charging locations, but is there other, any other ideas for charging stations? I know when I went to the, um, cruise ship terminal where there were people who were from, uh, migrants, to the credit of the city, tons of bikes, because everybody's working, whether you're supposed to be or not, we're all working, and charging bike, it was working really well. So is there something else you could think of that would be satisfactory to get charging in a more healthy situation? We need charging stations. I had a crazy idea and nobody liked it. Police stations and fire stations. Nobody liked it. Any ideas? Any other ideas?
So the fire department is part of the, you know, the micro mobility task force and, and they're working on it, trying to, uh, to address and implement the recommendations from the task force.
You don't want it at the fire stations, I assume?
A lot of fire stations don't have the, the room for it.
So no other ideas?
Uh, you know, the task force was looking at outdoor charging, uh, you know, at locations that have the space to do it.
So far, they've come up with two.
I'm sorry?
So far, they've come up with two in the whole city, just so you know.
Yeah. Uh, it's difficult. It's difficult.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not helpful, but thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next we'll hear from Councilmember Feliz, followed by Delarosa.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I wanna thank you, Chair Ariola, for this, uh, very important hearing. And I also wanna thank, uh, Majority Leader Powers for these very, two very important bills. Bills that will literally save lives. And we're talking about, uh, fires. Uh, we're talking about families being put at risk. And we're also talking about, um, families losing their homes and all their belongings, literally from one second to the next. So thank you so much, Majority Leader, for working on these two bills. Uh, so have a few questions. We have two bills, one about the swap program and another one about the safe, uh, storage and the container. So the first question is about, actually, a few general questions. How many fires have we had this year already? And how many of them have been due to lithium ion batteries?
We've had sixty-three fires related to lithium ion batteries. Uh, I'll get you the total number of fires that we've had this year. I don't have that with me right now. But sixty-three from lithium ion batteries.
And how do those numbers compare to the lithium ion battery fires last year during the same period?
I don't have the breakdown from last year, uh, up to this time, but last year we had a total of two-hundred-and-twenty, uh, lithium ion battery fires throughout the city, and we'll break that down for, uh, for the April time period, for the year over year.
Okay. And how many fires, uh, did we have last year caused by lithium ion batteries and everything else? Whether it's an electrical fire, how many total fires, roughly?
I don't have to, I don't have the numbers of total fires. We'll get you that as well.
Okay. Um, so going to the questions about the swap program, I know we're still exploring and thinking about ways of implementing the program, but what would the ideal program look like? Who would be the one, let's say, assuming there's a swap, who would be, what would be the agency receiving the uncertified, unsafe batteries? Who would be the agency providing the voucher or the safe, uh, batteries?
Thank you, councilmember. I think those are, I think those are some of the deals that still need to be, uh, resolved. I know, particularly in respect of DCWP, um, we have limited expertise with respect to procurement or even storage of these type of devices. But I think the bill, the bill is constructed well in the sense it acknowledges that this is gonna take many players. You know, we have FDNY in there, we have DSNY. Other members of the task force can have valuable expertise too, like DOT. So I think it's ultimately something that we're still working to determine and how to best implement that in, um, in its home, so to speak.
Okay. Do you think, uh, more resources would be needed to fully and properly implement the program, including, uh, more funds for staff and et cetera?
I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure about staff necessarily. I could just think in terms of the products themselves, there, there would be costs, like, um, particularly if we consider scope. Um, you know, I, as I mentioned earlier, the, the task force did identify possible al- alternative funding coming from the state or the federal government. I think Councilmember Brewer brought up a great point about the unique needs of workers, whether they're independent contractors or whether they're employees, about having multiple batteries. Um, I think the report, the action plan itself identified that some batteries can cost upwards of five hundred dollars. So those type of costs are something that the, the city will need to, need to tackle if, if there's an implementation.
Okay.
But let me, I'm sorry, I'm, one last point. I, I wanna make sure that I get it in as, as well as, I also do, we do believe that businesses, major employers, um, also have a certain responsibility to ensure that deliveryistas, uh, employees have access to safe devices too, if they're completing, if they're doing the hard work on behalf of these employers.
Okay. Um, and also, I know it's still very early, we're still working on the specifics, but do we have a plan for getting rid of the bad batteries? I know when we're talking about disposing the batteries, that could cause additional fire safety issues in, in the, the S and Y, um, department and et cetera.
I, I think it's gonna be a fundamental component of, of this type of program, of how we dispose them safely. I mean, ultimately, we don't wanna create a situation, I'm sure, and my colleagues can speak to this more, of, of just moving batteries to a place that is unsafe or storing them unsafely. I think we, we need to leverage the appropriate experts of, of being able to get rid of those, uh, those things appropriately.
Okay. And final question, what do you think the ideal swap program would look like? Do you think it'll be providing the battery or providing a voucher? And, and again, I know it's still very early, we're still working the specifics, but...
No, I think that's, um, I think it's, it's a fair question regardless. I mean, even, even though the, the plan is only a few weeks old, I think it's a fair question to start tackling now in the immediacy of this crisis that we've identified. Um, I think what we, what we hope for the city certainly is to hear from delivery workers themselves on what they need, what they want for their, for their products and their vehicles. I think that will be something that helps us tailor a program that fits their unique needs.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Feliz, I just would like to, um, get that information for you. In 2021, there were a hundred and four fires caused by lithium ion batteries and four deaths. In 2022, there were two-hundred-and-sixteen fires caused by lithium ion batteries, resulting in six deaths. And in 2023, we're already at sixty-three fires with, uh, that includes five deaths, including a seven-year-old and a nineteen-year-old in Astoria. That's information, if I have it, you should have it. You need to be more prepared when you come, because this is what we're talking about. People's lives that are at risk and the reason for our legislation. But I'm glad I had that for you. Councilmember Delarosa, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chair Ariola. And I wanna thank the colleagues too for, uh, putting together this great package and, and the ones previous. We're all concerned about this across the city, obviously. My district, just as everyone else, has had a number of, of fires. I think, from my perspective, something that I'm concerned about is that, as our city is still undergoing a housing crisis, we are seeing in communities like mine, predominantly immigrant communities, predominantly in, low-income communities, where we have people, you know, renting rooms, subletting rooms, right? You have multiple families living in, in a one apartment in a multiple dwelling. Sometimes they're legal setups, sometimes they're not. But workers, um, who are trying to make ends meet in a city where they're consistently being priced out, have to get creative about their living conditions. Um, and so with the delivery industry being predominantly, again, immigrant, low-income workers that are already at risk of exploitation, um, I'm, I'm interested in pursuing, uh, solutions that, one, keep them safe as workers, but also don't seek to penalize them, right? For having to work, as, as Councilmember Brewer said, fourteen, twenty hours a day to try to make ends, ends meet. And I know the department is currently undergoing, um, wage standard reviews for this industry, which I think will go a long way in preventing the exploitation, but also, um, thinking about these, these, in, the infrastructure that exists for these workers to be able to safely charge, understand the, um, dangers that are, you know, putting their own families in. I, I met a family where the worker, where there was a fire and the children were harmed, right? These workers don't want this for their family either. But as, as Councilmember Brewer brought up, there aren't, there isn't any infrastructure in our city to be able to do this. So one, I wanted to ask, what have the conversations been with the industry, um, itself? What are the outreach efforts to these immigrant workers? Language access is always an issue. Um, there might be fear of retaliation due to immigration status. So what are the cares and, and opportunities that exist for this workforce in order to educate them on the dangers that exist and how they can have other options? So that's my first question.
The general answer about the outreach for fire safety education, uh, is making sure that people are aware that these are, that the lithium ion batteries are a danger and, as we described before, uh, possibly a, a crisis. Uh, and, and talking about the safe charging, um, you know, of, of these batteries and of these devices, making sure that they're compatible.
And I think, Councilmember at DCWP, we've also, we, we partner closely with FDNY, DOT on their outreach initiatives to bring kind of a, at, in certain events, a one-stop-shop of the, the different protections that are available to deliveryistas, uh, whether independent contractors or whether employees. I think, um, you know, we also work very closely with the representatives of workers, whether that's Los Deliveryistas Unidos, Workers Justice Project, um, Drum. I mean, these are key partners for the city in engaging with workers, um, in, across many communities and across many languages.
And I would just add that what we said in our, uh, the materials that we distributed to, uh, that owners, uh, distribute to apartments pursuant to, uh, uh, emergency preparedness requirements, uh, of the fire code, is that people need to bring this issue to building owners, whether it's a apartment building owner or their employer, and explore with them, um, whether or not they can provide safe charging facilities. Um, peo- you know, uh, apartment building owners certainly don't want fires in their apartments. And although, obviously, this is a difficult issue as to setting up, uh, a, a charging facility, whether there's space and security issues, um, I think under the current situation, people have to step up. Uh, and similarly, as, uh, the bill, uh, under consideration here addresses, uh, employers also, uh, employers of, of people who are using, um, uh, e-bikes and other devices, uh, need to, uh, provide charging facilities in a safe way, so possibly they don't have to do it in their own home.
Well, we hope that with this, um, swap program, we'll also see some priority given to the workforce, um, to probably be first in line to try to get some of those swaps. Um, an adjacent question is, there was a fire in my district that was caused by a lithium ion battery, and the neighbor said that the fire alarms never went off. Um, and we know that there is sort of a crisis in, in communal spaces and hallways where, you know, if there's a fire in another apartment, there, if there isn't a fire alarm, it doesn't go off to allow the rest of the neighbors to know that they need to get out. Is the department looking at, um, inspections for like common areas, lobbies, stairways, um, in, in light of the increase in lithium ion batteries?
When the fire department inspects residential buildings, that is the only area that we're allowed to inspect. We're not allowed inside, uh, the dwelling space, so we do inspect, uh, the hallways, the, the cellar, the roof, uh, the stairways. Uh, but, but remember also that the, the code does not require fire alarms, uh, aside from smoke detectors in many buildings.
Yeah. Even though smoke detectors have not been going off, I think something that we should maybe partner and try to look at is, um, post-fire also, making sure that these building owners are, uh, doing, when they're remedying the buildings, that they're putting in this, these, uh, fire smoke detectors. Because I hear it constantly, no one in the building hears any alarms going off until literally someone's banging on their door. And so this, I think this is something that we also have to continue to look at.
And that, that is an issue with the lithium ion battery fires because, because they take off and, and spread so quickly. Uh, the, the way, uh, say a normal fire would start, it would start to smoke and smolder, which gives that, that smoke detector time to activate and people to react, and these take off so, so quickly. Um, and just to, uh, get back to the question from Councilmember, uh, Feliz earlier, I might have misheard, I thought you were asking for the total number of fires this year and last year. We have the breakdown for lithium ion fires. What I don't have is the breakdown for lithium ion fires from January to April of last year, but we have the totals. I apologize for mishearing the question.
That's fine. I actually asked about both, uh, total numbers in the entire year and also from January through to date.
Ten-four. Thank you.
Okay. So I thank you for coming and thank you for your testimony, and I believe we can open to public testimony at this point.
Thank you, councilmember. We'll, we'll have folks also watching as well in the streaming to, to follow along with the public testimony. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, everyone. We're gonna do public testimony now. Um, from, uh, we'll hear from Ronald, Ronald Butler. Ro- Ronald? 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 So it's real here from Ronald Butler, followed by Robert Sloan. You can begin when you're ready. Yeah.
I have sufficiently big mouth, but it's okay. Um, good morning, my name is Ron Butler. I represent Energy Storage Safety Products International out of New York, Brooklyn, New Lab, and Detroit. I'd like to thank you for inviting me to offer a brief statement on this extremely important topic. My company is honored to be funded by the United States Department of Transportation through multi-year research grants that allow us to complete research into and develop solutions for the safe transport, storage, and charging of lithium ion batteries. It's real to this issue. As an outcome of the projects, we have identified relevant tools and technologies that might be leveraged in the effort to better contain and control battery failure events of all types. We have completed extensive research into comparing and contrasting current and future technologies that may meet the battery safety mission that you have outlined today. As an example, we have done exhaustive research into characterizing the performance of materials for containing and controlling lithium ion battery fires. Additionally, we are testing relevant Additionally, we are testing relevant build materials, such as those that would be used in battery bags as an example, and have developed prototypes of real-world battery transport, storage, and charging tools. We fully support INT 949 and INT 950 and applaud the proposed initiatives found in today's council oversight agenda. We also recognize the challenges that will be faced when attempting to satisfy and enforce a couple of the proposed agenda items. Per 949, we would encourage the insertion of additional language that calls for requirements that include metrics for the safe collection, storage, and transport of all battery technologies. This would certainly hold true for batteries accepted and thus owned by the city as part of an exchange program. We believe this should be clarified on the front end. Regarding 950, we would absolutely encourage in-depth consideration of certain metrics for defining the types of packaging, such as fire-resistant bags, that would be accepted for failure containment and control use cases. Our research has shown us that there are considerable limitations relative to claimed effectiveness and usability of these types of proposed solutions. Many products are touted as quote "fireproof" unquote. However, this is a term that we avoid, as few, if any, materials currently available in the research domain would qualify as fireproof per definition. Fire resistant is a much better fit. Additionally, it has become clear to us that the types of products currently available for sale and distribution, such as bags or containers, have severe capability limitations. We would encourage council to adopt a strategy that clearly outlines metrics for solution acceptability. This would include third-party validation, as mentioned earlier, and certification of potential solutions, such as airbags, by a nationally recognized testing laboratory. Additionally, we would encourage the requirement of higher-level functionality safety metrics for these proposed solutions. This would include requirements for failure detection, such as failure sensing technologies, formal notification capabilities, that is the audible or visual alert that would come with a solution, and failure communications technology. As an example, the ability to communicate failure to a mobile device at 3:00 in the morning. Simply put, the claims that these solutions may make relative to some level of failure containment, even if validated, simply isn't enough. We understand the impact of cost and solution availability on your decision-making. However, we consider these types of requirements as absolute. And if I may briefly, please allow me to say something very positive about your own FDNY, and I'm sure you all know this already. I've had the chance to work with FDNY through Chief Michael Mays and has met and others in the departments. They are by far the best in the world. I am constantly shocked at the depth of their understanding, the depth to which they continue to seek understanding. I say that as a retired 32-year firefighter from the city of Detroit. I know a little bit about this subject matter. Thank you, and please do not hesitate to reach out to me, as you always have, for additional support.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next, we'll hear from Robert Sloan from UL Solutions. After Robert, we'll turn to some folks on Zoom.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Robert Sloan. I'm Chief Scientist for UL Solutions. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on the two introductions. UL Solutions and the entire UL Enterprise, which includes our not-for-profit parents, UL Research Institutes, and UL Standards Engagement, both applaud and support the continuing work of this committee, the council, Mayor Adams, and FDNY in continuing to tackle this problem of lithium ion batteries and fires. Regarding introduction 949, as we testified to last November, the UL Enterprise has been working to help increase the safety of lithium ion batteries and their end uses since 1985. Given the alarming spike in e-mobility-related fires in New York over the past several years, UL Solutions is supportive of efforts to get safer UL 2271 certified batteries into hands of city e-bike users. However, as has been mentioned already this morning, we would caution that these batteries are not quote "plug and play." Each original equipment manufacturer OEM has its own control circuitry for the entire electrical system, encompassing the e-bike, the battery, and the battery charger, and the OEM takes steps to ensure those parts communicate and work safely together. Because batteries are not cross-compatible right now, we recommend the proposed program be used to guide consumers to purchase only the batteries recommended by the OEM of their With regards to introduction 950, UL Solutions has performed extensive research on enclosures for lithium ion batteries and contributed heavily to several standards relevant to storage products for lithium ion batteries. UL Solutions is very supportive of requirements for businesses to supply their workers who use e-bikes with storage containers for their e-bikes removable battery. We would further recommend directing FDNY to require such storage containers be certified to relevant voluntary consensus standards as the standards become available. Lithium ion batteries undergoing thermal runaway can explode, release toxic gases, and spread fire. Given the deflagration that these batteries can produce, UL Solutions began conducting research in 2018 to help develop test methods that would allow for the performance evaluation of different battery enclosure materials. The research culminated in UL 2596, which is a test method for thermal and mechanical performance of battery enclosure materials, which uses a blowtorch that blasts flames and grit to evaluate the temperature and mechanical performance of a material. This research also supported the development of UL 5800, battery fire containment materials, which supports the design, testing, and certification of containment products used by the airline industry for portable electronic devices with compromised batteries. Both of these standards have been published by UL Solutions' parent organization, UL Standards Engagement. UL Solutions is grateful for this opportunity to testify and commend your committee's ongoing efforts to improve safety with regard to micromobility for New Yorkers. We're always available to serve as a technical resource on this or any other safety issue that comes before the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ligia Qualpa from the Deliveristas, followed by Gustavo, yeah, Ligia, she's available, one sec. It's not in time.
Oh, right here? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Nice meeting you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today in this committee. My name is Misha Walba. I'm the Executive Director of the Workers Justice Project. And we're deeply grateful to be here to testify. So I represent Workers Justice Project, which is a worker center that organizes low-wage immigrant workers. In the last, so like last year, we've been organizing up delivery workers who have been essential workers, providing essentials, delivering essential service, I mean, essential goods to New Yorkers. And just like it has been expressed today, we're deeply concerned about the spikes in the fires caused by these lithium batteries. And we're fully support City Council's effort to get unsafe batteries out of our streets. Safety, it is a priority, not only for Deliveristas, but the entire community and members of Workers Justice Project. And we're committed to advancing our work and working with elected officials and leaders in our community to build a new era where we transition to an era where we have not only safe batteries, but we allowed to continue to, to build to a new era of micromobility and build the infrastructure that meets the needs of 65,000 Deliveristas who are here to stay. But it is important to recognize important factors. One is that Deliveristas who are essential workers rely on, not only rely on these batteries to continue to provide essential, to continue to deliver essential goods to New York City. And most Deliveristas rely on these e-bikes to continue to make a living in the city of New York. And over the course, over the past two years, more and more Deliveristas are moving to e-batteries as a way to deliver, to meet the demand of the industry, to be able to travel the long distances that are required to do these deliveries, and most importantly, to being able to make an income. And while we are concerned, we want to also make sure that the city takes the right approach. And the right approach here is to make sure that the city builds the infrastructure. The issue are not just the fact that there is unsafe batteries, but the issue is that there is a lack of infrastructure in our city. And if we're moving to news, to the new era, we want to make sure that we're also building the right infrastructure. We strongly support the legislation that allows Deliveristas to be able to transition at a low cost, to be able to access the safe batteries. Unfortunately, despite the Deliveristas until now do not have a minimum pay. What our concern is that the trans, time? We want to, we want to make sure that this, in doing this transition, we provide the resources that Deliveristas need to be able to transition to this new era. Without a minimum pay, the cost, the economic cost that Deliveristas will incur is significantly impactful. And we want to make sure that Deliveristas not only are able to, able to transition safely, but are able to continue to make a livable pay. And we strongly believe that the right step is to make sure that we provide the resources that are needed. We would like to see City Council working very closely with us, not only on figuring out a way we can provide the economic incentive through this transition, but also we want to make sure that we build the infrastructure that meets the needs of Deliveristas, such as building charging stations, making sure that we educate workers, particularly Deliveristas who speak multiple languages. And there is a clear commitment from City Council by passing this new proposal to work not only with the Deliverista community, but to make sure that the transition is safe and equitable to all Deliveristas. We're here to continue collaborating and continue to be connecting with Deliveristas who are committed to building to a new era of safe micromobility. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Gustavo. It's not in time.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Gustavo Che. Soy miembro del proyecto Justicia Laboral y líder de los Deliveristas Unidos. Llevo más de una década trabajando en la industria de reparto y he sido testigo de los cambios y de las necesidades que existen en la industria desde que han llegado las aplicaciones en la ciudad de Nueva York. Soy uno de los miles que usa las bicicletas eléctricas para hacer este trabajo, ya que las aplicaciones nos han forzado a recorrer largas distancias cada vez más. Somos trabajadores que dependemos de las propinas, no tenemos un salario mínimo por el momento, y las bicicletas eléctricas nos ayudó a sacar a la ciudad adelante durante la pandemia, ya que peladear durante 10, 12 horas todo el día sería imposible. Pero gracias a estas bicicletas eléctricas, el trabajo se nos hizo un poco más accesible. Pero después de la pandemia seguimos siendo esenciales para la ciudad. Somos más de 65,000 trabajadores que contribuimos a la economía de esta ciudad. Demostramos que es posible vivir y trabajar en la ciudad, y creemos en una ciudad de Nueva York más sostenible. Estoy aquí para apoyar a la ley 949, que propone proporcionar baterías a bajo costo y sin, o sin costo en las bicicletas eléctricas o las SCUDIS. Desafortunadamente, somos 65,000 trabajadores que seguimos sin tener un pago mínimo, dependemos solo de la propina. La transición golpeará duramente la economía de miles de familias, si es que no hay ni un programa que proporcione ayuda a los trabajadores, ya que el costo de estas baterías son elevadas, son de 500 a 600 dólares. Esperamos contar con el apoyo de la ciudad para seguir también nosotros apoyando a la ciudad como lo hemos hecho todo el tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. Gracias. Next, we'll hear from Adam Roberts on Zoom. Adam, you may go ahead once you're unmuted. Hold on a sec. Thank you.
Thank you for holding this hearing today. I'm Adam Roberts, Policy Director for the Community Housing Improvement Program, also known as CHIP. We represent New York's apartment building workers and owners, and we're here to testify strongly in support of intro 950. Lithium batteries have become a major fire hazard for tenants and apartment building workers. There are too many stories from the last few years of apartments or even entire apartment buildings catching fire because of lithium batteries. These fires are incredibly intense, spreading too quickly for firefighters to properly respond to. As building workers and owners, there is little we can do to alleviate the risks caused by lithium batteries. As they are not physically part of buildings, there are limited design solutions to mitigate the risks they pose, particularly given how combustible they are. Therefore, the answer must be to make the batteries themselves safer, which is what this bill intends to do. Furthermore, we agree that the onus should be placed on businesses to ensure that the batteries are safe, even when they are not being charged at that business. In this era of work from home and app work, the lines between one's home and workplace have blurred. And when a business requires their employees to bring dangerous aspects of their job home, it should be that business's responsibility to mitigate the risk. In the future, we hope the council will consider legislation to go a step further by requiring businesses to carry insurance on lithium batteries. Otherwise, victims of fires caused by lithium batteries, including our members and tenants, could be left without proper compensation. We strongly urge the council to pass this much-needed bill. It will go far towards saving the lives not only of delivery workers, but of their neighbors and those who maintain their buildings. It should not be so deadly to be a delivery worker nor to live or work near them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. There are so many things that we really have to take into consideration when, when we are doing legislation, and I couldn't agree with the people who gave public testimony more, because we really need to know who is going to be responsible for the financial costs of replacing dangerous batteries. Where does the administration believe that there should be income limitations because some of the delivery workers cannot afford to even purchase a certified battery? And then how far do we really ask the third-party bigger companies like Uber Eats or Grubhub or any of those delivery companies to really invest in their workers and invest in programs to make them have a safe mode of transportation to, to deliver the essential and necessary products that they are, that they are delivering? And again, to the point of our last, our last public testimony person, there are other people that are involved. There are people who live within the buildings that these, that these bikes are being charged in, so it's not just the lives of the delivery workers, it's the lives of their neighbors that are at risk as well. So we do have to continue to put more legislation forward to make sure that the proper regulation is intact. We have to make sure that we know what type of electrical line is necessary to, in order to plug in your, your valid UL certified battery and your certified charger. We need to know all those things. We need to work harder to keep our city safer, but this has to be a public and private partnership, I think, to really make it happen. So I appreciate everyone's testimony tonight. I want to thank Josh Kingsley, our Senior Legislative Counsel, Will Hungash, our Senior Legislative Policy Analyst, and Phyllis Inserillo, my Chief of Staff, who really, you know, put these together. You have no idea what happens behind the scenes before a hearing comes forward. I want to thank everyone who came today, our Sergeants-at-Arms, and everyone is, who's doing our online Zoom work. Have a great rest of the day, everyone.